You've reached the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. This meeting is being broadcasted via Zoom virtually and live streamed through our district's YouTube channel. So we hope that you engage us in those manners today. So we are going to move forward with, are we in compliance with the open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Heschel?
Here.
Solaji?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Wyman?
Here.
Carolyn?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Carnes?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Dr. Davis, would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. I have no board report this evening, so Dr. Davis, if you want to move ahead.
Yes, so we have our good news, good news report, which I think will be shared on the screen.
One moment.
Okay, first of all, we'd like to recognize the Oshkosh North Communities Program. Students who were, who participated along with over 35 million people in the National 9/11 Day of Service by partnering with local organizations to provide a helping hand and making an impact in our community. Organizations who participated, including the Fox Wolf Watershed Alliance, the Oshkosh Area Humane Society, Christine Ann Center, Throwing Oshkosh, and the Winnebago County Housing Authority. So thanks for everybody who participated and congratulations to the students and staff at the Oshkosh North High School Communities Program. I had an opportunity yesterday to participate in the open house for the Wave Robotics Program. So the students in the program were excited to showcase their robot and explain what they were doing, how they problem solve, and how they work through their teamwork and attain skills through that program. So they're working through some improvements to the, to their robot from, from last year, and we'll have a big unveiling in January on what their task will be for this year for both the regional and their international competitions. So thanks again to all staff and students who participated in that great program. It's an incredible opportunity for kids to engage in a lot of different skill sets. And so just want to thank them for their time. It was a great, great open house last night. And then finally, just a list of activities, again, just continue to be busy not only in the schools, but, but around the community and want to thank all community members for coming out and showing us support. And it just allows me to really get a deep understanding of needs of the community and then how we can help support, support our schools. So that concludes our good news report for tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next up, we are District Administrator Supplemental Reports. We have listed a COVID-19 update by Mr. Kamerer. Is he providing an update this evening?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna start out my, my report by talking about the Winnebago County Weekly Data Summary, as I always do. So of course, that looks at the case rate in our district geographical boundary, as well as other districts in our county and overall county data. So the, the summary looks at data for the past two-week period. So the most recent report that came out this past Thursday was looking at the two-week period that ran from September 1st through September 13th. So the case rate for our geographical boundary, district boundary during that period of time was 544.7, which put us at the very high category for burden status, and that continues an upward trend for COVID-19 cases in our area. And really, the, the driving force behind that uptick continues to be our under-18 population. So for my report, based on that two-week period, the, the number of cases that we had for the under-18 population was 106, and 73 of those cases were OESD students. Now, I did get a chance to take a look at some of the data that came out today in terms of our under-18 numbers, and that number has risen to 160 for the two-week period that ends today. So something we'll continue to watch closely. And that's one of the key, key indicators that we're using to base our decisions on. But in terms of this, this two-week report, the individual age breakdowns go a little something like this. So the under-five population, we had 13 cases. For students aged five through nine, we had 42. For students aged 10 to 14, we had 29. And for students aged 15 through 17, we had 22. So out of that group, as you can see, the, the five-through-nine population really had by far the most cases at 42. So it'll be interesting to see, looking at the numbers this week when it's broken down a bit further, and next week, if that continues to be the case. But again, we'll, we'll keep a close eye on it. From a vaccination standpoint, the, the district continues to urge anybody who is eligible to be vaccinated to go ahead and get the vaccine. Currently, only about 51.3% of Winnebago County residents are currently fully vaccinated. And for our, again, our district geographical boundary, that number is 47.1% of individuals are fully vaccinated. Now, those statistics do include the under-12 population that is ineligible for the vaccine. So that, there's, there's been some, some mixed information on when that's going to be available for that population. It sounds like it's going to be within the next couple of months. It'll start being available. So it'll be interesting to see where that percentage goes once our, our individuals under the age of 12 are eligible for the vaccine. But for those who are interested, if you would like to know where to get a vaccine in our area, you can go to the Winnebago County Health Department website. It has all of the, the vaccine information there, including reference to walk-in Wednesdays at the Sunny View Expo Center. So anybody who is interested, Wednesdays are really a great time to go and, and get the vaccine if you haven't already. In terms of COVID testing, we did open a centralized testing center at District Office this past Monday. And the main reason we did that is to reduce some of the burden that is being placed on our nursing staff, which is extremely stressed right now. So we figured if we could direct people to one centralized location to receive testing, that it would really help. And I, I think it has. This past week, our appointments for testing have, have been filling up each day. We were able to take right around 40 people each day. And you know, we, the first day we were full by nine o'clock in the morning. The second day, it wasn't too long after that before our appointments were filled. Today, we had a little bit more availability, and I'm guessing as the week goes on, that'll continue to be the case. But for any students or staff members who do need to get tested, they can call Central Office at 424-0113 to make an appointment. And they can come in. We do have PCR and antigen tests available. However, if, if an individual is receiving a test in order to return to school, if they have symptoms, they would need a PCR test in order to verify that, that they are COVID negative before they are eligible to return. We also continue to have testing available at each individual school site, but we're reserving that for students or staff members who are already at school and maybe sent home because they have symptoms. You know, again, we want to reduce the, the stress on our nursing staff. And, and that's why we're really trying to limit the, the number of tests that they're going to be asked to perform in a given day. In terms of our, our district dashboard, again, that's updated every Thursday. The last time it was updated was September 16th. At that point, we had 84 active positive cases in our district. And out of those 84, 76 of those were students, eight of those were staff. And they were dispersed among 19 different school sites. And at that point, we also saw 14 cases of suspected COVID-19 transmission in our schools. That transitions to classroom spread. We, we have started, started to see cases where we've had multiple students testing positive where it's suspected that, that transmission occurred in the classroom. And in the instances where there's more than one case where we're, we're thinking transmission occurred, we've been rapid antigen testing the rest of the students in that classroom at the elementary level. You know, if we find additional positive cases, we look to transition that classroom to virtual for the, the next week. And the reason we do that is we want to contain the spread and give ourselves a chance to identify any other potentially positive cases in that week. And in the instances where we have closed down classrooms for a week, we, we've ultimately had more students testing positive during the week. So I think it's been really effective in controlling the spread and outbreaks in, in some of our classrooms. And that's a strategy that we're going to continue to use going forward. So that concludes my report.
I'll also add, just really quickly, that Matt and I participated on a weekly basis with the Winnebago County Health Department, just to get updates on the data and just also talk about support. Part of our conversation today was about support for testing from the Health Department and, and looking at some structures because it is putting an enormous burden on our, our school nurses who also have, you know, feeding tubes to put in and a lot of other demands that haven't gone away along with, you know, our, our testing demands. So that's putting a lot of stress on our system. So, so Matt and I were, were on the call today and, and will continue to brainstorm with the Health Department to see what support we can get in neighborhoods, you know, and, and get, get the department to be able to help support us. Because what we're doing now is going to be difficult to sustain as we're, as we're moving forward. So, but also just want to commend all of our, our nursing staff assistants and anybody who's come into volunteer. Like, they've done a tremendous job and it really allowed us to be able to stay in person as we have. So just want to shout out to, to all of them because that's, uh, it's been incredible work and we thank them for that.
Thank you for that. Next up, we have, and thank you for the, for the report, Mr. Kamerer.
Does, uh, do you have a question?
Oh, did I? Sorry. Go ahead.
How many classrooms? I have two questions. The first one is how many classrooms are currently virtual at our elementary schools and middle schools and high schools? And my second question was related to an abbreviation that Matt used earlier, the testing, something PR testing, which is how many days does that take? And what's the difference between the two of them?
Sure. So to answer your first question, I believe right now, we, we did have to, we did quarantine a classroom today, but there is a section of after-school care in one of our elementary schools that we did have to quarantine starting tomorrow. And I do believe that we had another classroom that is able to return tomorrow. So with that, the, the after-school section is really the only one that will still be in an active quarantine. And in terms of your other question, the difference between PCR and rapid antigen, the rapid antigen tests, we, when we conduct them, we typically get the results back in about 15 to 30 minutes, which is nice and it gives us some indication about whether or not an individual is positive. But those tests are not quite as reliable as the PCR tests, which are sent to a laboratory. And the samples are assessed there to determine an individual's status. So the turnaround time right now is between 48 and 72 hours for our PCR tests. In the grand scheme of things, that's pretty good. You know, you look at some of the other sites in our area and with the, the current demand, you're looking at three to five days in a lot of those places. So hopefully that, that turnaround time doesn't get any longer. But right now, for our testing site, we're, we're looking at, like I said, 48 to 72.
Thank you, Matt. And then my last question is the same question that I ask every board meeting, pretty much. What can we do as a school board to help keep our students in person, which is what we all want? We want our kids to be, stay in school. What can we do to support keeping schools open? How can we help?
Yeah, I think the, the biggest thing is if you're eligible to be vaccinated, get vaccinated. Community spread directly relates to the spread that we see in our schools. So the more people are vaccinated in our community, the less spread there'll be in our community in general. Mask, you know, at school and public places where you're indoors and, and there are lots of people around. But then also reinforcing hand hygiene and other mitigation factors in the home are, are also helpful.
Go ahead, Mr. Carnes.
You guys said you were communicating with the county. The only thing I would ask if you can share with them is I, I've heard from people that they're struggling to find testing sites, that there's limited hours and days and some of that stuff, you know, and people who maybe get the email about, you know, being exposed and they thought, you know, I don't have to test, but I'd like to, and, and some stuff isn't open. So it's, it's been a struggle, I think, from some of the people, at least the feedback that I've gotten. So if you can pass that information on to them, you know, I don't know, Sunny View, I don't think is open on weekends. It's only open, what is it, 8:30 to 5:00 during the week? So it, it limits when people are in school and working as well. So but there's other factors to that, too, I understand. I just want to say, like, you know, we overall compared to some other schools and, and districts. I, I mean, we've had a couple of classes that seem that shut down, but overall, we're, we're moving along okay. I mean, not to compare ourselves with Winnicott County, but my sister's kids are in Winnicott County and they shut down the whole elementary school for two weeks. So, you know, let's, let's keep doing what we're doing and, and keeping those kids in school and doing everything we can. So I appreciate what you guys are doing to stay on top of it. So thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I have one comment. And I, I just want to acknowledge that one of the other different elements of Mr. Kamerer's report tonight is, is the inclusion of the, the, the potential next steps of vaccination of 5 to 11-year-olds throughout the country. So it's not nowhere near ready for that. But this is something that I've asked at pretty much every meeting since, I believe, since June in regards to when we might hear about these steps taking place. And I think that the more people that we have available to be able to get vaccinated will help us keep doing what we're doing, and that's, that's serving the best interests of students and keeping us in school. So, so, so I look forward to hearing more information from you and, and learning and reading more information about it on my own as more information is released, released related to that confirmation of the use of, of vaccine for 5 to 11-year-olds. So, thank you. Any other comments, questions for Mr. Kamerer? All right, seeing none. Thank you for your report. And next, we are on to other reports. This is typically an opportunity for committee chairs to provide a, a limited report to what the committees that the school board manages and such. So is there any reports this evening? Mr. Carnes?
We had an education committee meeting. What day was that? September 9th? And most of that meeting was just going over some of the summer professional development that the staff had gone through and what they had worked through. And you know, I, I, I left feeling pretty good that our, our staff is very much trained on, on everything that they can be and need to be and have done a lot of the work that they, they need to and want to. So for the most part, that was, that was the meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other board member wish to provide a report? Go ahead, Ms. Solaji.
The Policy and Governance Meeting, our committee, met on the 8th. We reviewed several policies, four of which we're bringing to you tonight to vote on. That's the Library Media Center policy, sexual and other forms of harassment, and then Board Staff Communications. Those were just updates that Neola provided for us that we adopted. And so you see those in your board packets tonight. We did also review the Corps believes vision and mission statements. We didn't make any changes, so that hasn't been brought forward, but it was good for us to review. And then there were two policies that Neola sent to us that we opted not to adopt because they were new and we just decided that the materials in there were covered in other policies that we already have. So that's the work we did. We'll meet again on October 6th at 8:30.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any other board members wish to provide a report? All right, seeing none. We will move on to the next portion of our meeting. So the next portion of our meeting is an opportunity for the public to be involved, albeit virtually. It's still an opportunity to be involved and to provide us your input. So tonight, we will provide a total of 45 minutes during the meeting for non-agenda and agenda-related public forum. Each speaker will be provided, will be allowed around two minutes to speak. When you speak, I will set a timer for that. It'll be a two-minute timer. You may hear it go off because it'll be, it'll be audible. But that'll be indicate your time, and I will try my best to give you a 30-second reminder that your time is about to be up. So, so first up, we have non-agenda-related public forum. I also have some guidelines that I need to read that relate to non-agenda and agenda-related forum. So all members that wish to take part in the public forum need to provide their name and address. So we ask that you clearly state your name and address and the topic of which you wish to address. If you're acting as a spokesperson for a particular group or of individuals, please indicate that group that you represent. A total of 45 minutes during the meeting will be, will be allotted, again, will be allotted for non-agenda, agenda-related public forum or public comment. We have provided two options for comment. One is either written, which has been emailed. If someone emailed anything, it would have gone to Dr. Davis, of which she'll present, or it would have been via the Zoom meeting today. So if those comments, email comments were provided in advance, they'll be read aloud in tonight's meeting. Again, everyone has two, around two minutes to speak. Public comments should be used rather than a question-answer dialogue. Please state clearly and concisely your matters of concern. And please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability in such instances. Please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 or direct, to be directed to the appropriate administrator to address your comments. So all people who have signed up to speak tonight were provided access through a Google form of which they provide us their information. And so I'm going to begin with non-agenda-related public forum. And the first person that we have tonight goes by the, the initials of C.L. and the last name Brynwood. Can we please let them into the room?
They've been admitted.
All right, thank you. Hello? Is someone there?
Yes, thank you. So before we begin, we are all in agreement that the members of this board have all executed their Wisconsin State Constitution, Article 4, Section 28, oath of office, correct? Well, then there appears to be a mistake. I am here to address the issue of the COVID measures implemented by this board in the mandatory of wearing of masks, such as N94 masks. You know that the box itself informs that misuse of these masks can cause injury or death? Therefore, what evidence do you have? What support, not just quote, "We follow the CDC and consult with the Winnebago County DHSS for guidelines"? What proof of claim do you have of the science behind this mandate? Where is the science? If you cannot produce the science, how is this not child abuse? The maxim of law states that proof relies on he who affirms, not upon he who denies. Right now, the science, the facts, the evidence denies that COVID is a threat, that COVID demands this emergency action? You haven't produced the science. You haven't produced the evidence. The Declaration of Independence and the Constitution are clear that private property shall not be taken without just compensation. The science is the just compensation. Furthermore, it has been stated that any enterprise undertaken by a public official who tends to weaken public confidence and undermine the sense of security for individual rights is against public policy and the courts have already determined with McNally versus United States, 483 U.S. 350 in 1987, and Dorton Enhanced and the enactment of the 18th U.S. Code, Section 1346 by the Congress of the United States, that a public official is a fiduciary toward the public and deliberately conceals material and information from them is guilty of fraud. Therefore, the law commands that you be burdened with the duty of care with obligation to produce the facts, science and evidence relied upon as consideration for any emergency measure for any taking of the private property of the people, the failure of which tends to weaken public confidence and undermine the sense of security for individual rights, which is against public policy and includes the deliberate concealment of material information and setting of fiduciary obligation of which shall apply to all employees and elected officers of the state, including the governor and constitutional officers and all employees and elected officers in all cities, towns, counties, and political subdivisions, including the educational system. No proof of the facts, science and evidence equals no proof of claim. No proof of claim equals no right.
30 seconds.
And no right equals a wrong. I will yield. And the next person behind me will probably finish our statement.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Brynwood, can you provide us your, your address, please? Your name and address? All right. So the address that Ms. Brynwood provided was 1821 Iowa Street, Oshkosh. So all right. Next up, we have, her name is Jessica Colton. Can we please let Jessica Colton into the boardroom, please?
We are not seeing a Jessica Colton in the waiting room. There's nobody by that name in there, at least as far as their Zoom name goes. So I would probably suggest going to the next name on the list.
Okay, thank you. So the next name on the list is Christie Walsh. Christie Walsh, are you here?
She should be coming in now.
All right. Ms. Walsh, can you please provide your name and your address, please? Ms. Walsh, are you here?
Her audio appears to be connecting.
Okay. How are we doing? Ms. Walsh, are you here?
What rights do you have to ask my address in a public recorded meeting? What are those rights? Who gives you those rights to ask my address? Who gives you those rights?
Ms. Walsh, I, I have your name and your address already, so if you like.
But if you say my, if you say my address loud, Yeah, but if you say my, if you say my address loud, that's, that's, that's not gonna go well with me. You have no right.
Ma'am, every person that comes to a public meeting, whether it's virtual or whether it's physical in our, in our board meeting, they are asked to provide their name and their address.
Yes, address for you guys in the Google form, not to be put on YouTube. What you just did.
All of our meetings, Ms. Walsh, all of our meetings are broadcast on YouTube. Every single meeting is broadcast on YouTube.
So what is your address? Can I have your address?
Sure. My address is 828 Washington Avenue. I have no problem providing that. I'm a public official. So.
Thank you. So I'm gonna continue what C.L. started. So Brynwood, whereas the maxim of law is force plus wrong is equal to greatest enemy of peace, which is Antichrist, no proof of claim would constitute a violation of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 1 of the Wisconsin Constitution with promotion of acts dangerous to human life through a state-sponsored religion, religion employing state-sponsored coercion to give the illusion that one has no choice but to comply and perform, of which the courts have already declared with United States versus Kozminski, 487 U.S. 931, 1988 constitutes an involuntary servitude. And for this board, its staff and the teachers governed by this board to engage in this activity without proof of claim is to engage in domestic terrorism as defined with Section 802 of the Patriot Act, Public LNO 10752, through the willful harming or injuring of a child or the endangering of the person or health of a child with unlawful corporal punishment or injury by mandated reporters as defined with the Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting Act. Additionally, under Wisconsin State Statute 940.325, strangulation and suffocation states, whoever intentionally impedes the normal breathing or circulation of blood by applying pressure on the throat or neck or by blocking the nose or mouth of another person is guilty of a class, class H felony. Again, I repeat, impede the normal breathing or by blocking the nose or mouth of another person is guilty of a class H felony. A class H felony warrants a fine of up to $10,000 or six years in prison. Therefore, due to your
30 seconds.
And due to your willful and intentional violation of your oath of office for our refusal to support, to support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Wisconsin, you are given this notice to step down from your board position immediately. Otherwise, litigation will follow. Govern yourself accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Walsh. Have a good evening. All right. Next up, we have on the list is someone for non-agenda-related public forum. Person's name, I believe, is Eric Lenz.
We'll be admitting them now.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lenz, I, I see that you are here. Are you able to unmute and give us your public comment?
Yes, I had muted. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Hey, thanks for being here tonight. So.
Yep, you betcha. Um, I'm not gonna say a whole lot of things, but what I am gonna say is I think there's a lot of board members here that are either confused as to what's actually happening in the world with this false pandemic that's happening. And if you aren't confused, that means you're complicit. So that would mean that you know what's actually going on and you're committing fraud and you're lying. I hear a lot of people in this room tonight suggesting that five to 11-year-olds get vaccines. Um, the bottom line here is you are very dangerous people to suggest that. I don't know, Mr. Peschel, I heard you say that earlier. I don't believe you're a doctor or have a license to be giving that type of advice. So I think a lot of you people in this room are treading on very thin ice. And you have a lot of people watching you right now. So you just better be ready. I know you probably all think you're gonna get away with it or you're protected, but you're not. We're coming for you. All right? That's the way it is. We're coming for you. That's the bottom line. You played your game at the admin building when you walked out and here we are. So we're not going away. The thing is, by putting a mask on a child, do you realize that that's a human rights violation? That can be reported to the United States Military for war crimes. I bet no one in this room actually even realizes that that's a thing because it is. Putting a mask on a child is considered attempted murder. And if you don't know that, you better go back to school and do some reading. Because it's the God's honest truth. I've been researching this for two years. You people, all of you in this room, are a danger to society. You're going to be removed. If you do not remove yourself, you will all be removed. We will do it for you. You are breaking the law. You are violating the rights of human beings.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Lenz.
COVID is not a real threat. The games that are being played and the lies that are being perpetuated and perpetrated upon the people of this city, county, state, and nation and world is a sham and a scam. So I'll repeat, you're either ignorant to it or you're complicit. Ignorance of the law is no excuse. So if you don't know what's going on, you better get the hell out of office because you're all guilty.
Mr. Lenz, your time is up. Thank you for your comments. All right. Next, we are moving on to the agenda. Well, let me just make sure there are no other non-agenda-related public forum participants. Can that please be confirmed?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we are moving on to agenda-related public forum. The same guidelines apply as to the non-agenda-related public forum. We have one person who is in the agenda-related public forum. Her name is Jancy Daimel. Can we please let her into the room?
She's coming in now.
Thank you. Ms. Daimel, when you are ready, go ahead and proceed.
Hey, can you hear me? I think I'm unmuted.
We, we can hear you. Thank you.
All right. Well, hopefully this will be a little bit more lighthearted conversation here. Well, good evening. My name is Jancy Daimel, Jancy Zeitler Daimel. I played on the Oshkosh West Girls tennis team for four years of high school. And at that time, the coach was Roger Zeitler and he also happens to be my dad. Side note, I'd never admit that out loud while I was in high school, but I'm proud to say it now. When I heard the West Tennis Courts were being redone, I knew now was the perfect time to request the facility to be officially named for my dad, Coach Zeitler. I was aware of potential obstacles, one policy for sure, that would need to be, that I would have to overcome, and that was the prerequisite of being deceased for facility naming consideration. So thank you for hopefully waiving this policy as the intended goal was for my dad to still be around to see the results of all of his previous hard work and dedication. You have all had the opportunity to review Coach Zeitler's accomplishments and the justifications of why this facility naming should be approved. And now I may be slightly biased for obvious reasons, but what he did for the sport and area youth speak for themselves. For over 30 years, Roger Zeitler was instrumental in helping both the boys and girls tennis teams achieve athletic excellence. Coach Zeitler stressed the importance of character and good citizenship and his teams are always a positive reflection on the city of Oshkosh and Oshkosh West High School. Coach Zeitler made significant personal and professional contributions to advanced tennis at Oshkosh West and in the city of Oshkosh. These contributions have had both a positive and lasting impact on Oshkosh tennis and have made him deserving of this honor. Not an only child, I do have a younger brother, Brayden, who's watching. He's a little bit shy and not quite as vocal as me, but he did want me to say this on his behalf. We are grateful that our dad's name and legacy would continue on for a sport that he literally lived life for, for so many years, right up until his retirement. So in closing, I thank you all very much for your time and consideration of this proposed request.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Have a great night. Stick around for the, for the next part of the agenda.
Okay. We, I will. Thank you so much.
All right. So so I actually made a mistake earlier in the agenda. I forgot to ask for the approval of the agenda. So Ken, is there any items? I'm gonna back up if that's the will of the board to back up to approval of the agenda? Okay. So at this point, I would entertain any, any requests to change the agenda around. Go ahead, Mr. Karns.
I actually wanted to pull that item that she had just spoken about for individually considered resolution regarding the naming of the Oshkosh West Tennis Courts.
So the number, number seven?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands or anything. Okay. So so calling for approval of the agenda, moving number, resolution number seven to individually considered resolutions. Please call the roll.
I do believe I will need a first, a second, a motion, correct?
Correct. We need a motion to amend the agenda and moving number seven to individually considered resolutions. Moved by Karns. Anyone for the second?
Order, point of order. I don't
Yes.
Motion to move a resolution.
No, we don't. You're, you're, you're right. We don't need a motion to move a resolution. That's correct. So we will just consider the individually, number seven being moved to the individually considered resolution. We will move on to the consent agenda where we will need a motion to approve that agenda minus number seven.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the point of order. Was there any other comments? Yes. Ms. Carlin, did you have a comment?
No, I said so moved. I'm
Okay.
I'll second the consent agenda minus pulling number seven.
All right. Sorry for the confusion. So, all right. Please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Selaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog? Herzog?
Aye.
Karns?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Resolution carries.
All right. Thank you. So next, we are moving on to individually considered resolutions. I'm going to read resolution number nine first and then I will look for a motion to move it. So resolution number nine reads, "To be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of, Board of Education approved the retirements as filed with the Secretary of Board of Education, Mr. Steve Gunther and Mary Johanek." Looking for a motion.
So move.
Moved by Herzog?
Second.
Second by Selaji. All right. We are open for discussion. Go ahead, Dr. Herzog.
Human resources are one of our most important resources in our school district, and this is certainly reflected in our employees. And so we have an opportunity once again to thank and to celebrate the contributions of two people who have devoted multiple years to the service of this school district, to its students and its staff. Steve Gunther is retiring as an assistant custodian, fireperson two from South Park Middle School and has served the district in a positive manner for, for 24 years since 1997. In addition, Mary, Mary Johankneck is retiring as a full-time health assistant, LPN, serving both the Shapiro Stom Academy and the Ready for Learning Program and has been a valued and valuable member of our school district for seven years. So I just want to take a moment to wish them all the best in retirement and thank them for their years of dedicated service to our district, its students and staff. Thank you.
Any other comments related to this resolution? All right, seeing none. Thank you for those comments and please call the roll.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Karns?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Selaji?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Resolution carries.
All right. Please give me a moment here. I'm I need to get myself back to the next resolution. All right. So the next resolution was originally named resolution number seven in individually, and has been now been moved to individually considered resolutions. It reads, "To be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Oshkosh Area School District named the Oshkosh West High School Tennis Courts in honor of Roger Zeitler as presented to the Board, Secretary of the Board of Education." I am looking for a motion.
Second.
Who, who was the first?
Christopher.
All right. Mr. Karns moved, seconded by Carlin.
I'll make a motion, or Karns.
We, we're good. We got it. Thank you. All right. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr.
So the reason I pulled it, and I appreciate Mr. Zeitler's daughter talking tonight. It, it, one of the cool things for me is being in a city that I grew up is situations like this. And so Coach Zeitler's son Brayden actually graduated from high school with me. So I went to Oshkosh West. It's very familiar. Has seen his name on the, on the tennis courts. And honestly, when they redid the tennis courts, I was wondering, you know, if, if that was gonna stay on there, that we were gonna find a way. And so I'm very happy that we're looking at, you know, and I'm supporting, you know, waiving that policy so that we can get his name put on that, on those tennis courts where it rightfully belongs. So I'm happy that his daughter was able to speak tonight and just something that I think is important to highlight some of the great people within our community and the people that have set the stage for us to be successful and for our kids to be successful. And he embodies that and he, he deserves this.
Any other comments from board members? All right. I, I have some and I'm gonna do my best to be brief, but to be very thrilled to be able to vote today for this. So I, I too am, am a graduate of Oshkosh West. I played tennis, though I would never say that I was good at tennis. And I did play on the West Varsity team, but only on the JV level. And so my, my level of, of connection to Mr. Zeitler was minimal in that sense, but it was more outside of the, the court that I think I had more impacts with him in regards to connecting with him in regards to how to prepare for sports and running and doing all this. And he probably would never know that he had an impact on me because we interacted so minimally, but the amount of the times that we did had a huge impact on who I am today. Tennis is a large part of my life in, in the sense of, of when I use it for relief. And he was part of that, not because we weren't connected as much, but because I was connected to players that were connected to him. That made me better That made me better players and taught me how to use tennis as a relief, as a release of angst and, you know, and energy and and to be able to work through that. And so very much appreciate the opportunity to have made to create the opportunity for the tennis courts to be named after him because he has has a sizable impact, not only on my life, but on hundreds of people that I know. So one thing I do want to say is that we we are looking to organize a grand kind of reopening of the tennis courts and to provide a moment to invite past student athletes back to to kind of recognize Mr. Zaitler for his efforts in the community, as well as on the court with our with our students of of many, many generations. And so as we get further into that process, we will definitely be communicating that out to the board, to the community and and the family for sure. So the last thing that I want to say is that it's been great to be able to work with the family to be able to make this happen. And and initially, this was supposed to be a surprise for Coach Zaitler. But the Oshkosh Examiner really let it slip on Monday. And so it could no longer be a surprise. And so I know that he's at at home hoping to watch what we're doing just about in a couple, in a minute or so. And to 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 instill his legacy long term in the Oshkosh Area School District and the Oshkosh community. So it's a proud day for tennis. It's a proud day for student athletes that have been touched by this man over many generations. So any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Resolution carries.
Well, board, we have just named the Oshkosh West Tennis Courts for Roger Zaitler. So thank you for that, and congratulations to Mr. Zaitler, forever a coach. All right. So let me get back to the beginning of the agenda. Usually I print off portions of the agenda beforehand, but I ran out of ink, so I couldn't do that tonight. All right. So we are at request for future agenda items. Is there any request for future agenda items? I am seeing no requests. Okay. Any announcements? I see one hand. Dr. Herzog?
Actually, I actually have two announcements. I'll try to keep them brief. I had the opportunity to represent this board and the large school districts of CISA six at a recent Board of Control meeting. Two takeaways from that meeting that were significant that I want to share tonight. One was that we adopted the budget for CISA six for the coming year. And the second is that there's going to be a major professional development program on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. It will involve not only all the districts in CISA six and which I believe are thirty-nine. There will be national and international speakers who will be doing four sessions during the day, three to four major keynoters. There will also be opportunities for districts to have their leadership teams work together to facilitate issues that they want to address within their districts. In addition to that, CISA six will be providing consultants to work with individual districts on topics of their choice. The second thing I wanted to announce is that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards has been gearing up for its fifteen regional district meetings to be held throughout the state. We are in District Five and or seven, excuse me, CISA six, District Seven. Anyway, we are in District Seven of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. There is a dinner meeting and program on the evening of Thursday, October seventh. It's at the Breeze Wood Resort in Nina. Those who don't wish to come for the dinner might plan to come for the program. I sent all board members a memo today on that. There's also additional information on the W A S B website. So we're hoping to have a good turnout at this event. It's a great professional development opportunity for all of us and a way to bond and network with our fellow board members as well as superintendents throughout District Seven. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those announcements, Dr. Herzog. Mr. Carnes?
Just two things. I had two opportunities to experience a couple of things at our school district over the last week. One on Friday, I went to the alumni distinguished alumni event at Oshkosh West for Jeremy Monette. I thought that was an awesome experience and something I was very happy to be able to experience, you know, with everybody there. The other one was last night. Dr. Davis already talked about about being at the Wave Robotics Open House at Oshkosh North. I had a seventh grader that was just amazed at everything that was there that night. So I thought that was very cool, especially at the Education Communication Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, talking about some of those items. It was very cool to see them firsthand. So it was nice to be out there.
All right. Last chance for any announcements from board members? All right. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Moved by Carlin, seconded by Salaji. Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Wright?